Well, good afternoon, Larimer County. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2024. We are gathered for our 1:30 work session. And we have a number of topics on our agenda. This is our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Work Session. My name is John Kofalas, Commissioner, Chair of the Board, joined by my colleagues, Kristin Stevens and Jody Shadak-McMally. Across the way, we have Lori Cadrich, our Assistant County Manager. And we will turn it over to our Community Development Director, who can begin the conversation.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. And all of the items on our work session today relate to the Community Development Department, so I'll kick it off. We have both Amy White, our Co-Compliance Supervisor, and Matt LaFerty, our Principal Planner, here to present on several items. We should be able to get through, well, we have a full agenda, we should be able to get through each of the items relatively quickly and have time at the end for updates more generally from Community Development and from Leslie Ellis, our CIPR Director. So I'll pass it off to Amy White, who will talk about the 2025 NOCO Humane contract.
Thanks, Rebecca. Amy White, Co-Compliance Supervisor. And we're here today, we do the annual contract with NOCO Humane. That contract is ready for signature with the passing of the budget last week. And we just wanted you all to know that we're doing it a little bit differently. In the past, we've put this through on the consent agenda. And instead, Judy Calhoun, our colleague at NOCO, will be present tomorrow to present just a short presentation on the services that we receive from that NOCO contract.
Thank you. And we have discussed the details of this contract, this update, and the compensation and all of that.
That is correct, Commissioner. We brought it to you in July at a work session here.
Great. Thanks, Amy. Thank you, Amy. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments for our Co-Compliance Supervisor on this topic? Well, that's, we'll just keep moving right along.
All right. And topic number two is to let you all know that we are going to be filing what we call an Order and Assessment, which is also part of our business process, but different than the one that we brought before you a couple weeks ago. This is one where we have sent a report of cost to the owners of the property, and they have not paid. This was a particularly large property cleanup that was court ordered to the tune of $43,000, which is generally higher than what we normally see. So the normal procedure is for you all to be aware that the Order and Assessment is coming through. Commissioner Kofalas, you'll sign it in the morning if you so choose. And then we get that down to the Treasurer's Office so that it can be placed as a tax lien on the property.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. And I did look at the packet for tomorrow. This is on the consent agenda?
This goes through on the consent, yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Well, we're on a bit of a roll.
Okay, well, we can move next to Matt LaFerty for a couple updates on long-range planning items. Thank you, Amy.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's not going to work all of a sudden. That's why I just brought you guys handouts. It'll take too much to log on. So a couple handouts in front of you, and we'll just go over them real briefly. About a month ago, month and a half ago, Rebecca and myself had attended, and sorry, Matt LaFerty, Community Development Principal Planner, Rebecca and myself attended a Timneth Town Council meeting and explained to them that our current intergovernmental agreement could be strengthened by including a GMA overlay zone district, which is something we spoke to you all about with the Planning Commission several months back. The overlay zone district opens up a series of tools that we can use internally to the county to help people rezone or realize some of their aspirations about developing their properties, as well as it makes sure that we're doing it in a way that aligns with the Town of Timneth Comprehensive Plan. And that's the whole idea behind these intergovernmental agreements and GMAs. I provided you the presentation that I gave to them, just to give you a highlight of what we discussed with them. They were in support of efforts that we want to go forward with. And so, starting in January of next year, I'll do a brief webinar with the public, and we'll do a notice and discuss with the public out there, the community around the northern end of Timneth up to about Cobb Lake, what the changes are looking like, how it might affect them or how it might benefit them, and then take that input. And then following that, we will have a 60-day period in which I have to publish this as a legislative rezoning item. And then we'll come forward to the Planning Commission and ultimately to you all to have a overlay zone district adopted by the county. And then hopefully that will serve our purposes for the distant future with the Town of Timneth. If you have questions about that, I can explain reasons why that's important or not important. But I think we covered it previously in a work session.
And if I could just briefly add, thanks, Matt. So this, we already have an intergovernmental agreement in place with the Town of Timneth, and it is serving both communities well, both unincorporated area and Timneth. The Growth Management Area Overlay District is, would tie that intergovernmental agreement into the Land Use Code and allow us to apply some additional provisions of the Land Use Code, additional tools, like Matt said, that allow for rezoning to match Timneth's Comprehensive Plan rather than only aligning to the county's Comprehensive Plan. So it's a way of taking that intergovernmental agreement and giving it more force and effect as it relates to zoning and development.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Matt, for that, for that additional information on your part. Colleagues, any questions or comments for our long-term planner? Yes, Principal?
What is the timeframe on that? So is that something that's, how involved is that process?
As far as we need to take it is the intergovernmental agreement, as she says, is already in place. That lays out how we actually function as two communities together. This is an overlay zone district, so it's like adopting new zoning. But because it's covering a large area, it's a legislative rezoning. We're not individually zoning properties. And in order to do that, we have to publish the zoning map changes for 60 days prior to a hearing, and then we have to go to Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And of course, we want to give the community an opportunity to view what we're doing and understand what we're doing, and then let them comment on that. So probably towards March, April, we will look for adoption.
And they were obviously open to this, that we're bringing it forward. They wanted to do that, which is good, yeah.
Yeah. In 2020, when we adopted the intergovernmental agreement with them, we created a GMA. There's forms in there. But when we adopted that GMA, it's really just an agreement between the two parties. And so it doesn't, it doesn't sit on top of properties out there. So private property owners could question, what gives you the authority to do this? By what zoning principles can you do this and whatnot? And so placing the overlay zone district on it makes those properties subject to the same intergovernmental agreement and to our planning principles that come out of our Land Use Code.
And also their land use, their concepts of what they want for their community as well.
So if your property was zoned a particular way, I'm going to use RR2, which is Rural Residential in the county, and the Town of Timneth offered commercial zone for that property, you have a choice as a property. You can develop your property per RR2, because we're not going to take your current zoning away. We're just putting a new zone district on top of it.
Sure.
Or you could look to that town's Comprehensive Plan, and if their Comprehensive Plan says use a commercial zoning, then we can come in and rezone the property to match up to their Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah. So some clarity and predictability sort of on how they develop in those spaces that are not annexed yet.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, it really helps, where we have these overlays adopted, it helps those communities grow in the way that they intend and plan to grow. So it's a way of the county supporting the long-range planning goals of these communities. And we presented to Town Council at their invitation, so this was a conversation that was initiated by the Town of Timneth, their elected officials wanting to understand how to get a GMA overlay adopted similar to what we have in Fort Collins and Loveland.
I think that's great, just because I think there's a lot of questions amongst their, even their residents around what, you know, there was that one annexation that was very confusing to people, and why did it happen, and what were some of the details? And it was hard to tease out some of this. So that's, I guess, when I think about predictability and stuff, there's some, okay, we know that, you know, this is tied in with, you know, the Land Use, I mean, there's, I guess there's some teeth, I don't, teeth is probably not the right word, but something that provides some guidance, I guess, in a way, right? I mean, and that's, I think, has been missing. And if you don't have that, I think people really don't sort of understand the plans for the town or the plans for the potential annexation, or what things should look like in those areas. So I'm glad that, I'm glad that they're wanting to do that, because I think this is a, you know, a best practice, and that it would be nice to have that everywhere, then we don't have those tensions that come up. Thank you.
Commissioner Shadak-McMally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So the Town Council reached out to you to have you present about putting this overlay district, which will kind of, because we have the IGA, or we're almost, we have the IGA, so. So when you talked about going out to talk to residents in the Cobb Lake area, is that...
Between Timneth and Cobb Lake.
Cobb Lake. So, you know, a lot of the folks moved out there a long time ago and, you know, had a, are used to things how they are. How are we messaging that to them? And how are we reaching out? Because I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions and concerns about what does this mean? Is the town going to force me to have, you know, denser, you know, what does that look like? And how are we helping get that feedback? And, because you said we're not going to change, you know, we're not going to change and to force that, but there's this overlay. So I'm just curious how that looks like for folks who live on incorporate parts of the county like I do. And you wonder if next, you know, things change, and then your way of life after 30 years is changing. How do we, how do we reach out and message that to them?
Excellent questions. First of all, we need to have some sort of community outreach, and we're going to look at it from the perspective of how many people do we need to notify? And is it a mailing notification that we're going to be able to do? Or are we going to have to use some other mechanism to get the word out? And then have some sort of a webinar, explain the pros and cons of this? Because there are pros and cons. As you framed it, you know, if you and I were neighbors, and I, we were used to living in a very rural environment, and you're already zoned a particular way, and me, and I come in and I zone my property up, then you might see that as an impact to you and find that undesirable. However, for some property owners, they might see that as a benefit, that it increases the value of their property or whatever, if they're choosing to sell it for development. And so the key here, though, is it doesn't take any of your current rights away. Your zoning is your zoning, and it doesn't force anything on you as far as new zoning. It just says that you have options, and it does not force annexation on you any more than state statute currently requires annexation. It just makes a lot of those things clear. It does, however, do some things like if you were to develop a subdivision on your property or to do, develop commercial use on your property, something like that, it clearly outlines what development standards are we going to use for roads and infrastructure and drainage. And so that we're coordinating not just land use, but we're coordinating... and drainage, and so that we're coordinating not just land use, but we're coordinating how the roads are going to look, so that, you know, someday when that property does become eligible for annexation by the Town of Timneth, then they'd be willing to annex it, because it looks like their project, and it meets their standards for development.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do you want to expand on that?
Sure.
So, this happened a while back to a friend of mine in a different county, a neighboring county, where the town of Lamont kind of annexed around them, but their little street of less than a mile did not get annexed yet, because they, I don't know, I don't know the whole history, but when it finally came to pass, a lot of them, it was a battle, because they were told they had to pay then for the infrastructure, like the $20,000 put us to connect to the sewer and the water and all those things. So, that's also a concern, is how does that look, or is there, what is, what kind of, I know this was a while back, so I'm sure things are different, sort of some of those folks, I don't know if everyone in that area is on septic or infrastructure water, and so what does that cost, and what does that look like for people? Just curious about that.
And depending what jurisdiction you're in, for instance, I'm going to use Timneth, because we're talking about them, Timneth doesn't control water or sewer in their community. Water and sewer come from private districts in their area, and so regardless of your situation, if you're going to develop your property, you have to negotiate with that district what that looks like, and regardless of whether or not you're in the city or the county, you still have to deal with those infrastructure needs as we see it. So, we would require public water or sewer connection inside certain areas of the county, and so they might have to deal with that. As far as annexation policy and the surrounding of properties, those things come purely out of state statute, something that's not controlled through those things. So, if property owners allow annexation of areas, and eventually you become enclaved by that, then you could be forced by state statute over a period of time to be annexed, and when you're annexed, there might be certain rules of that municipality that force you into paying certain fees in order to get certain services and infrastructure made.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Leslie, did you have something to add?
Thank you. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director, and I just was hoping Matt could clarify that the intent of this project is not to change the boundaries of what was already established through the...
In the intergovernmental agreement.
You know, through the IGA several years ago. And there was a community engagement process in 2020 that informed and invited feedback from residents and that kind of thing. And at the time, the town had a proposal for a much larger growth management area, and that was scaled back, and that surrounded the area near Cobb Lake. And so, this project would not change the boundaries or anything like that. It would just put a new tool in place that helps implement what was already decided on and was already thought through some time ago. So, I just want to confirm that, and Matt can hopefully ditto that, too.
And I appreciate that, because that emphasizes the fact that people already know that we have an intergovernmental agreement, and they know that Timneth has a growth, or a policy for that area, including land use and whatnot. So, we're not changing anything like that. We're just putting a new tool in our toolbox available to help our staff and ultimately the town achieve what their long-term plans are.
That's very helpful. That's like, really helps me clarify that. Thank you for adding that detail. That helped a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, colleagues. I have a couple of questions you may have already answered, but one is regarding the intent here regarding this overlay zone district is to create some predictability, you know, clarify development standards and all of that. How will that result in actually streamlining the land use proposal process for, you know, property owners? I mean, knowing all that, that will allow the process to be a bit more streamlined, or can we speak to specifically how it will benefit property owners?
Doesn't change our processes, but it does allow our staff to talk clearly to applicants about what their alternatives are. So, absent the overlay zone, we'd like to point to the Town of Timneth Comprehensive Plan and say, this is what they would like to have, but the tool isn't there that gives us to upzone property and whatnot, and we have to wrestle with different procedures and processes. So, now we can talk to them and say, here's your options, and then once you pick it, we can run you straight through the process that is intended to be put into place for you.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. Rebecca, did you want to add anything?
No, that captured it.
Then, thank you. That's very helpful. My other question, and you can just say yes or no, because I'm going to paraphrase my understanding, regarding community engagement, and my understanding, based on what you presented, Matt, and colleagues, is that perhaps in January, there'll be some kind of a webinar to explain to people this process we're undertaking, the pros and cons, and you all will determine how to notice that to folks, whether it's going to be property owners within a certain radius and all of that. And so, that would be one opportunity for folks. If I get this right, just say yes. If I don't, then you can clarify. And then, so that's one opportunity. Folks will be notified. I imagine we would put something on the website. And then, there's a 60-day period, and folks will be informed that they have an opportunity to provide input that way. And then, finally, there will be public hearings, perhaps March or April, Planning Commission and then us. So, there's various opportunities for community engagement. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
That's it.
The only thing I'll add is we would probably do some kind of news release to announce some of this as well, so that we're getting the word out, especially if we determine that the area is too large to do a mailed notice and too costly, then we may try to get the message out through social media or newspaper, et cetera.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anything else regarding the Timneth-proposed GMA overlay zone district?
No, sir.
Then we can move on to Estes Valley and accessory living areas.
Another handout?
Lovely handout.
Just a quick one, and this is really just very informative to you, that the County Community Development Department has looked at the Town of Estes, there's a section in our code, Article 13, that covers certain land use principles and guides in zoning inside that for the Estes Planning Area, Valley Planning Area. And that was created when the town and the county kind of disbanded our intergovernmental agreement and moved separate directions. And so, when we did that, we adopted certain portions of their land use code into our land use code, so that there wasn't this big upside-down change of zoning confuse everybody as to what's going on. In doing that, you know, things have changed, and recently the state statutes were modified, and the legislature said, you know, certain communities need to provide certain types of housing opportunities, and that included partly the county and some of the front-range communities that meet certain standards, to provide accessory living areas. And so, while we have several code amendments that are going to happen in the Estes Valley area, the one that's really a focus is the accessory living areas, also known as ADUs, those types of things. Right now, today, just to point out what's going on, Laramo County allows ALAs everywhere in Laramo County, except for the Estes Valley Planning Area. And then, you go to the Estes Valley Planning Area, and the town now allows it inside their jurisdictional limits. So, there's a small area of the county, in-town area, that doesn't allow accessory living areas, units, unless they're attached to the primary dwelling. So, in the Estes Valley Planning Area, you can do an ALA, has to be attached to your house, has certain restrictions attached to it, and those restrictions do not align anything with the Laramo County's rules, and are no longer in alignment with the town's rules on how that looks. And the town's rules are different than the county's. So, what we want to do is find out which set of rules should we align to? Should we align more to the county side of how accessory living areas are applied, our regulations, or align more closely to what's going on in the Estes, Town of Estes, and keep that valley looking somewhat the same? Or should there be a unique set of rules just for the Estes Valley Planning Area? And so, we're going to look at that, and in order to understand that, we're going to do a couple of things, and that's what the slide on the handout that I gave you is, is starting in January, somewhere around the 9th, we're going to meet with the Town of Estes Planning Staff, and we're just going to talk to them a little bit about this is what we're doing, and what are their thoughts and feelings about what direction we should take. Following that, on the 16th, we're going to discuss the same discussion with our EV PAC, Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee. We're going to discuss that with them and see what kind of direction we get out of that group. And then, following that, on the 22nd, we plan on having a webinar series with the community up there. Again, similar to what we were just talking with Timneth, we'll get some information out, and hopefully we can get some public involvement up there, as far as what does the community up there think we ought to be doing? And then, we're going to follow that up with about a two-week, three-week exercise of a survey, so people could get online, tell us what their thoughts are, and give us information on that. Then, on February the 17th, my proposal is to come meet with the three of you again, and say, this is what we're finding out, getting the direction that you guys might want to have us talk about, and then from there, we'll work on coming up with a final alternative, which should be presented at a work session with the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission in March. We would do it sooner, but we're going to use the Planning Commission work session in February for some other projects, some 1041 things that we need to have that time for, so it's getting, this will get stretched out a little bit. If everything goes well at that work session, we'll schedule it for public hearings, and we'll have a hearing with the Planning Commission early April, and then we'll have a hearing with you all for final adoption, probably towards the end of April, beginning of May. And so, that's our goal, is to get that adopted, along with a series of other minor amendments that are going on in the Estes Valley Planning Area.
Thank you, Matt. Colleagues, questions or comments? Commissioner?
What other minor adjustments in the Estes Valley Planning Area?
Pardon me?
What are the other minor adjustments?
I found one the other day where they have a requirement for how you can have accessory uses on your property, like separate buildings, like can I have a barn or garage on my property separate from my house? And they have this really interesting equation that both Rebecca and I looked at the other day and went, oh, my gosh, how can the people living up there figure out this, let alone us figure it out? It's so complex. So, we're going to simplify it and align it with the county, which says, if you own a piece of property, you get 10% coverage of your property for outbuildings in addition to your dwelling. And that's an easy application for us to apply, and that means that if you have a small lot, you get less coverage. If you have a bigger lot, you get a little more coverage, but that's appropriate, given drainage standards and those types of things. And so, we're going to simplify some of those things. There was a request that in the accessory, not the accessory, but the EV accommodations district, that the short-term rentals rules that say you can't pass the ownership on from one person to the next should be taken out, because that's a non-residential district, because it's more of a commercial setting. It's not about family like you would find in all the other districts. So, we're going to probably propose to eliminate that, just in that one particular district, because it's a non-residential district, and we'll talk through that. And then, there's a couple of other really minor things.
So, they will be able to pass it on?
Yes, but only in that zone district.
Okay.
So, it might be, I have a small motel or a group of cabins, and that is more of a commercial operation that I could pass on, or sell to another person as a commercial operation. They could come in and purchase it and buy it and continue to operate, because they don't require the same licensing requirements in there. The other thing that's really important is, when we adopted that, it wasn't 100% clear what rules in the balance of our land use code apply to that area. So, we're going to add that specifically that 1041s apply up there, and those align with our rules.
Conservation developments.
Conservation developments are the types of subdivisions we would want to use for properties over 30 acres. There was one other big one that was just escaping my mind, but it would help us... Oh, sign code. Thank you, yeah. Our sign code isn't referenced, their sign code isn't referenced, so what do you do when those properties come and say, I need a sign on my property? We don't know which one to apply. So, it'll provide those types of clarities.
Okay. And hopefully, those have night sky considerations for the Estes Valley, because I know that the Town of Estes has...
We adopted the same lighting ordinance up there as they have, so that floated over with the code.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Commissioner Stevens, anything?
I don't think I have any questions. Thank you, then.
Okay. Lori? Just thank you for the work, and I'm recalling that when we talked about the updating the accessory living areas, ADUs or accessory dwelling units, in the county, we talked about updating the code, so it's a use by right, makes it easier to build these things, but it would be more involved, we wanted to have more community engagement with the Estes Valley folks, and I think that's what you're showing us here, so that's good. The details will need to be worked out. It's very unique up there. Isn't it unique up there?
Yes, very unique, very special, and very fragile in a lot of places.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Long-term Planner.
Thank you, sir.
Long-range Planner, excuse me. Rebecca?
Thank you. All right. So, I will now share some updates with you all related to community development. First, the easy one, you have a land use hearing this afternoon with one consent item on the agenda. We have not heard from any members of the public about this item, and that item also stayed on consent at Planning Commission. Of course, you always have the discretion to pull something onto discussion, even if there are not members of the public that want to pull that. Second, related to some upcoming work session conversations, we had planned on talking at a work session next week about water adequacy and the Northern Colorado Water Association Boundary Area, after a couple appeals that you have heard related to that area. We have moved that discussion to January 6th, so that we are able to cancel the work session next week, so that should be removed from your calendars. Also, on January 6th, we will come back with a revised work plan for the Community Development Department and continue the conversation about our work plan. I will share a revised work plan with you before that meeting, so you have time to formulate any questions or thoughts, and I will be reorganizing it a bit, so that it's a little bit easier to follow what are the most time-consuming or larger projects that we have identified for the work plan next year, and where are the items where we could make some choices potentially on where we're focusing our energy. So, please keep an eye out for an updated work plan document, and then we'll plan to discuss the first work session in January. And then, finally, wanted to let you know that on Friday, we deemed the Platte River Power Authority 1041 application complete. So, that's one of the 1041 applications we have in review. The deadline to confirm completeness was Friday, and we decided that it was a complete application, so we will now be working on scheduling hearings for that item. Similarly, we plan to make a determination on the Halligan Reservoir 1041 application this week or next week. So, we received a resubmital of information, and so we're still evaluating whether that application is complete. But once we have made a determination about Halligan Reservoir, since these are so close to each other, we will do one press release that addresses both of those applications to let the community know what those completeness determinations are, and lets people know to keep an eye out for when those hearings get scheduled. So, as a reminder, once we determine an application is complete, we have 30 days to announce the hearing dates, and then another 60 days after that public notice to actually hold both the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners hearings on those items. But it is likely that we will have at least a couple 1041 applications following on the same hearing dates, so we will evaluate as we are scheduling what we have the capacity for, and we'll work with you all to determine whether we need to schedule any special additional hearing dates to make sure we can accommodate the workload that may fall in the February to April timeframe, because we have a couple other 1041 applications also still in the completeness review stage.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, any questions or feedback? One thing that I would offer by way of feedback, Rebecca, that based on our very interesting home visit a couple of weeks ago, and there was a lot of good input, I'm hoping that some of that will be incorporated into any revised work plan. In other words, you know, making sure that we're focusing on... In other words, of, you know, making sure that we're focusing on streamlining some of these processes and digitizing what needs to be digitized and, you know, coordinating some of these, you know, the land use and the building aspect of all of these things. You, you know what I'm referring to.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Customer, customer service and making improvements to both our processes and the customer experience will be a priority for us next year, and I will make sure that that's reflected in the work plan and called out. We'll be updating a lot of our systems, but also thinking about outside of our technological systems, what are we doing to make our processes more accessible and understandable to our customers and making sure that we're providing the right level of support.
Right. I totally appreciate that. And I think a big takeaway for me, joining you for this site visit, is the importance of, you know, when, when we look at the work plan and all of these different projects with, over the next couple of years, it kind of brought home, let's make sure that some of the, these processes are in place, and that should be a priority, I think.
Yes, and I think we are also looking at ways in some of our projects to bring more customer voice into the design and implementation of some of these changes. And I'm thinking about our, our intergov permitting software program. You know, as we build that system out, one of our goals is to make sure that it works, it functions better for our customers, especially because we will be creating more customer self-service ability with that program so that people can apply for permits online and things like that. So we want to make sure that we're designing it in a way that works for our customers, too. So we're thinking about the best way to bring that voice into the project.
And you're reminding me that part of 2025 will also be about deploying in incremental way the new, the public input system.
Correct, yes. So, yeah, we will also be launching that public input software early in 2025. And we'd like to thank you all for funding that project. I think it'll be very beneficial for you all as decision makers who need to read through public input on development projects, policy items, and it'll, there will be the ability to use it on so many different project types in many different county departments. So we're really excited to get that off the ground.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Is there anything else?
That's it for me today.
Well done. Leslie, do you have anything to share?
I don't have anything super significant today. I've appreciated in the last week and a half, having a chance to check in with the directors and their staff teams and celebrate and appreciate them as we close up the year. And everybody's had a very fruitful year, working really hard, and I wanted to just extend the appreciation to you all also and wish you happy holidays and hope you have some relaxing time off.
And, and actually, along those lines, just a, a bit of a shout out. I think it's appropriate that we had a very nice holiday celebration a week ago with the Planning Commission members and, you know, fellow commissioners. And that, that's something we do annually, and I think it's a really important way to express gratitude in perhaps a more tangible way, you know, to the folks who put in a lot of hours, certainly on the Planning Commission. So that was, that was actually fun. And my wife, Beth, wanted to go back there. Anything else, colleagues? Okay. Then at 2:09 PM, we're adjourned.